Hello, today I'm speaking with Dan Orban. Did I pronounce that right?
Orbin, Orban, whatever you want to say.
Okay, alright, he's running for city council in Ward nine. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Yeah, so why don't we start with if you could just tell people a little bit about who you are, why you chose to run and why Ward nine voters should choose you?
Yeah, definitely. My name is Dan Orban. I live in the neighborhood, East Phillips neighborhood. So kind of connected to the Phillips neighborhood. I'm an educator, worked at all levels of education. So K-12 and then even at the college level and at the professional level. So I still dabble in a lot of different areas of education. I still work in the, every now and then consult for private and public schools through nonprofits I've been involved in. Or at least a nonprofit that I've been involved in, but I'm very interested in academia. I currently am a professor or a lecturer at the University of Minnesota. I teach computer science, algorithms, data structures, math.
That's a little bit, what I need right now is my, I got a new laptop and it's locked me out with the last security update and now I can't get into it. And I, all I need is the PIN and it won't work, so.
That's a little bit over my pay grade. Just kidding. Actually, I struggle just with those two. But yeah, I understand.
Okay.
Yeah.
So why are you running? I think maybe you ran two years ago, right?
Yeah, along with you.
Yeah, yeah.
I, so a couple of years ago, 2023, very late in the game, I was just very disappointed with the way things were going. There was a encampment behind my house and people were dying behind my house.
Wow.
And it's like some guy got shot over $20. So I mean, that happened after I decided to run, but it's related completely. My kids couldn't go outside during the summer. They couldn't play with the neighbors. And I was like, so what's going on in the city? Why, why, why is this okay? Like it didn't seem okay to me. It didn't seem okay to my neighbors. So I called 311 like 50 times, felt like 50 times. And over like months and months, nothing happened. And I'm like, okay, so what do I need to do to actually get this something reasonable, something approaching reality?
Right, right.
You know, so they said, well, you can reach out to your council member. I was like, okay, give me his number. And so I called council member, didn't hear anything back. And I'm like, well, I could do better job than this. That's just what I was thinking. I'm like, well, okay. So what, what, how do you run for council? And it was like the last day to sign up. It's like, okay, somebody's gotta do this.
So at the time, no one was running against Jason Chavez in that ward and so you decided to sign on?
Yeah, to my knowledge, no, no one was running, but maybe there was someone. I'm just like, okay, well, if no one's gonna do something, I better. Because these are my kids that I'm thinking about. These are my neighbors that I'm thinking about. These are people who, my neighbors are also, I mean, there's serious trauma that's actually going on in our neighborhood. So for me, it was more of like, hey, it's not, it's not optional in some sense. Somebody's gotta do this.
Yeah.
So it's more of like, hey, let's see what the process is here. So that's why I ran and it was a learning experience. I had a, actually a really great time meeting everyone in the neighborhood. I had actually made no enemies, which I was so surprised of. Because when you think of politics, you think of enemies.
Right.
Me not being a politician, it was something of a, actually an encouragement. I really, I found that even I like Jason Chavez, so.
Well, I mean, I guess even, that's even part of why I chose to do this newsletter is that I feel like there's gotta be a way to discuss issues and have different perspectives on them without making it a complete winner take all battle, right? I mean, I don't, I think between social media and different things, it's become so cutthroat, but it doesn't have to be. And probably being an outsider helped you approach it with, you know, from a different angle. Where it's not just about beating the other guy. It's about trying to speak for your neighbors and your own personal concerns and see if that resonates, so.
Yeah, I'm working together. I feel like we're not, as a city, we're not always working together. And I think that's important.
Yeah, I mean, to get things done for sure. So why, you know, why should people choose you over, you know, the incumbent at this point? Cause I don't think there's, I think there's just the two of you running, right?
Yeah, currently, currently there's only the two of us. Encourage anyone else who wanna join. But yeah, why would they choose me? That's a great question. I feel like currently the situation in our neighborhoods and the neighborhoods, the basic core needs are not being met. Like for example, public safety is still a major issue, even after two years since I ran. You know, it shouldn't be normal for my son to say, oh, it's normal time for the drug dealers to come out in front of our house. You know, he's looking at him and just saying, oh, that's, that's just how things are. And it shouldn't be normal for people to get shot and killed a block away from your house. I have some friends out in the country and they're like, why do you live there? For me, it's my home, right? It's, it's our family's home. I want to raise my kids to actually be ambassadors in like Ward nine, which is actually a very diverse neighborhood. We love it. We love that place. I'm not willing to give that up. Now, in that case, I actually see a lot of, with the current administration, not just the current council member in nine, I would say that it feels like things aren't getting done. I feel like there, there is a, I don't know, like a, a approach that is kind of not meeting the basic needs. Most people, this is one thing I found last time I ran. Most people just want good schools, good, safe place for kids to live and play outside and a good job. They wanna be able to support themselves and their family. I, you know, at least in my neighborhood, I know the problems there, especially with encampments. Maybe we'll go into that and public safety. I could tell you all sorts of stories. But I feel like also there's a, an agenda for maybe making sure we don't succeed in the business world economically. I feel like a lot of things are actually.
Like the current policies are not designed to support economic activity?
Yeah, yeah, that and laws aren't being enforced. And the businesses aren't willing to trust the current government, so they don't wanna stay here. Which means that the residents don't wanna stay here. I know so many people who actually, you know, have thought about moving out and have moved out.
Yeah, yeah, I hear it. I'm gonna press pause.
Okay.
Cause I just realized I left that door open there.
Oh, okay.
And I'm less worried about anyone hearing us is someone coming by with like a, you know, whatever mop bucket.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, great. So I'm just, I'm gonna move on to my next question here.
Okay.
So you talked about meeting your neighbors and walking around and talking to them. What would you say are the people in your board's top three issues right now?
Yeah, I think the top one, number one, hands down is public safety. People do not feel safe. You know, you go to online forums, you find out people don't feel safe. You go to your neighbors and they don't feel safe. There's a lot of, you know, PTSD trauma from things like encampments. I had it the other night. I've had this experience. There was a guy just parking right out in front of my house. And I'm like, okay, well, do we have new, not that that's, do we have new neighbors who might be staying there for three months? Which is what we've experienced before. Turned out to be my friend. It's like.
You get paranoid, is what you're saying, right?
Oh, yeah.
You know, someone breaks into your neighbor's garage and then all of a sudden, every time you hear a rattle out at the gas or at the trash can, you're like, holy cow, what's happening?
Yeah.
I mean, we, we had an incident where I have a small kind of concrete backyard that's fenced off and it has a high fence. But, and my wife and I were out there one night and just out of the blue, some guy like popped in there, walked through, let himself out our back gate and into the alley.
Yeah.
That was years ago. And you know, and it's like, but it was so shocking to have that happen. I mean, we still now, you know, my wife's been after me for years now to put up security lights with the motion detector. Because of that one thing that happened, so. So encampments have been an issue, particularly in Ward nine.
Yes.
Why are they, say, more prevalent in Ward nine than other wards, do you think?
I don't know, but I would say it has to do with some of the direction that would be related to maybe the incumbents. Okay, so it's, it's a great thing. In fact, I would be for this as well, to be compassionate. To actually care for people who don't have a place to live, people who are struggling. And they are, they are struggling majorly, but I think part of the problem is the encampments. It's like they, they, it, what it does. So the current incumbent would be definitely for, more for the encampments. I think the compassion idea is great. Let's be compassionate. But what ends up happening is these places are essentially open air drug scenes. I've experienced, talked to other people in Ward nine. What happens is sometimes the, I've seen this where gangs will take over the encampment and essentially threaten anyone who might say, hey, you shouldn't be here. And you might also have, there are places where people go to die. I say that in, it's just not compassionate because most, I find, oh yeah, you can revive people with Narcan, but that's reviving them so they can live to die another day? That is not compassion. That is not what these people in these, in these encampments need. And I think that the direction of compassion has a really great story, but I feel like it doesn't solve the problem both in the neighborhood, but for those living in encampments. It's just not a healthy situation all around. They should, homelessness is a hard problem to solve, but encampments potentially, there are solutions for that with maybe more shelters, more treatment programs, community-based programs that actually know the needs of people in those encampments. There are solutions. It's just the narratives there aren't solutions.
So I think one of Chavez's ideas, and I think he's got a couple of other supporters on the council, is this idea of safe outdoor spaces, which I'm very curious about.
Okay.
And so I'm just wondering what your take on them is. I think the basic idea, and I would need to read more, is that you essentially set aside space for an encampment, right? And I don't know, maybe it's fenced off, but then they have some toilets and basic needs and social workers know where people are. Is, do you think that is a healthy or compassionate idea? Or is, where do you stand on that?
That's a great question. First of all, I'm for whatever works. So if that was somehow proven to work, I'd be totally game for it, even if it's proposed by my person who's, yeah, Chavez, Chavez. Instead of me, I'm fine with that, right? If it works, go for it. Just my own experience with these kind of places, I think in open air, well, if you were able to keep the drugs out, maybe that'd be better. But I don't think these places are places of, that are healthy necessarily. If you're gonna do something outdoors, why don't you just do a shelter where people can be indoors? It's like, why should we have tents? These people need care. They don't need to be enabled to, to continue killing themselves.
Right.
But I mean, so as far as I can see, I mean, I, I need to read more as well. But I don't feel like actually encouraging encampments at all is one of the solutions. I think there are other solutions, like scaling out, like you don't have to have a group of people together. In fact, you could have like community care groups that could scale out to just a few people who are struggling, right? And then they can provide services. There's lots of faith-based organizations or cultural organizations that can help solve that problem. Not only that, it might also be good to work with the state and county who actually have services in place to do that. The city doesn't have services.
Yeah, I, you know, I've watched a lot of council meetings and I do find it complex trying to determine, you know, where's the state coming in and where's the county coming in and where's the city coming in? So you know, I definitely appreciate what you're saying there. Let's kind of move off of the encampments just a little bit.
Sure.
They were part of, I think what you were saying was the number one issue, which was public safety.
Yeah, and there's lots more than just encampments for public safety.
So tell me what else makes up the idea of public safety in your mind?
Yeah. So I mean, you could separate public safety to three main areas, right? So, but I think it's like one of the main things that people in the city want. What I want and what my neighbors want. Another one would be policing, right? And that's a complicated issue, especially in Ward nine, where you have Joy's Friday Square, right? And all the complexities, the cultural complexities that are involved in that. That go be, go beyond even what one person can handle. But I think that the nice, so okay. The police department has actually done quite a bit to add reforms to their agenda. So being able to work on recruiting, recruiting the right people. You know, being able to add some accountability for police. One of the best things that actually was created with, in the last four or five years, I think that's 2001, the Bravil crisis response team, which I think is amazing. Because these people are trained to be social workers, to solve problems that are more socially based rather than, you know, crime-based. This means we can actually focus the policing on other things. So that's the alternative to just doing just only policing. I think a lot of people want both and. They don't want just policing. They don't want just Bravil crisis. I feel like right now, the way that the current council's going, at least a lot of them would be, let's just completely defund the police. The problem with, there's multiple problems with that. One thing that is nice is that police do have accountability.
Yes.
You can, you can actually see what they've been doing. They have body cams. I mean, you can, you can have some kind of official process to, you know, litigate issues with the police. I find if you, alternative programs are just great. But I feel like police, they have some kind of method to actually enforce laws and enforce ordinances. I find that if.
Well, they have a, they have some authority.
Some authority, yes.
And you know, if I may, like, when you talk about them having accountability, it's not perfect.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, there's going to be some things that aren't caught on camera, whatever. It's not perfect. But there is no other, there's no perfect regulatory oversight ever. And you know, just recently, I, they had a, one of the neighborhood safety ambassadors, I think, shot. You know, trying to, and I didn't realize they wear bulletproof vests. I mean, I can't imagine going out into the street and it being so dangerous, I need a vest on.
Yeah.
And being asked to, you know, stop crime or whatever.
Oh, that's concerning.
That's a tough one. But so quickly, where do you stand on say, hiring more police or getting up to the charter amount? I mean, is that something you support?
Oh, yeah. I, I think we should maintain core services, which is actually hiring to the, not only the base. One thing that I think is very important is to restore trust in policing, which is really hard to do when you don't have many officers. And the reason is, is because those officers are focused on, you know, top crimes, murder.
Yes, yeah.
Murder and theft. I mean, even theft is low on the list.
Very low. Yeah, that's a 311 call.
Yeah. But if you had more, then you could also do some community engagement and actually start to work together to solve problems. I mean, I would love to see police and community members build like a house together.
Right, like a habitat for humanity.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, we'll see with the community safety centers, right? There's gonna be both police and these different groups together in the same building, so.
Yeah.
So that's, that's kind of number one, the public safety encampment bucket. And then, so what's number two, you think, on your neighborhood list of concerns, your neighbors? What do they talk about with you?
Yeah, they, they talk a lot about, like, well, we talk so much about public safety.
Yeah, it's like 80% public safety and.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, one of the things is businesses, which goes back to public safety. We do want to support small businesses. They don't feel supported or cared for. I think a lot of times, there's this dichotomy between, well, employee and worker, right? That's, that's a really hard subject. That's been in the news recently. I'm still trying to figure out all that too. It's not my, my, my expertise necessarily. In fact, when I'm going for this, I'm, most people are like, well, you've kind of gotta become a PhD on everything. But I would say that businesses need support, especially from the city. I mean, think about the like three main things. We have, we need to, we want good schools. We want places to raise our kids. And we want a place, a way to raise our kids that would be financially sustainable. Well, if there's nowhere to get a job, that's hard. I mean, I look at Uptown and Downtown. They're, they're kind of like ghost towns and it's kind of sad. It feels like your city is really falling out from the inside. So I would really like to support these businesses, meet their needs and figure out how we can better encourage people to stay.
Right, yeah.
It seems to be a hard problem. And part of the thing is, is I feel like they just don't feel supported. And we should support the workers as well, but it's, it's, I feel like it's just obvious businesses are leaving.
So public safety, supporting small businesses, what do you, what would you call number three here?
Three is just kind of actually making city council boring again. I mean, what do we need to do? Just meet the core needs of this. We're not, we're not out here to solve the world's social problems.
Right.
We're here to make sure the city runs smoothly, people feel safe. The fire department has enough money to, to be able to do their job. The police department have enough money, enough people to do their job. Streets are clean, streets are well-maintained. And you, you, you don't have like, yeah, yeah, the core services are actually what we need to focus on.
So how would you rate the, the streets and lighting in your neighborhood?
My neighborhood?
And I, I'm asking this because I recently saw someone talking about it online, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean, my neighborhood's a unique one. There's a, okay, so part, like my neighborhood, neighborhoods around mine, there's actually a lot of trash on the boulevards, but that's due to a lot of other things that are related. My daughter can't stand the trash, right? That and I feel like, yeah, I mean, we've, having good lighting, having good ways to maintain traffic is good as well. We've had a lot of, I mean, my neighborhood's, maybe not the best example, but we've had a lot of people like car thefts and people driving down the street at like 80 miles an hour. Almost got hit a couple of times. And that's just normal in my neighborhood. So my neighborhood's not necessarily the best example, but yeah, those kind of things are important. And being able to maintain the streets, that's getting back to a boring lifestyle. Rather than the theatrics about whether we should be the experts on world peace, you know?
Okay, good, good. So next question here. Are there any specific policies that the current council has passed? You just kind of mentioned one, but are there, are there any that come to mind to you that you would have agreed with or that you particularly disagree with? I mean, obviously you mentioned they don't need to solve world peace. But there's been some specific ones recently. The budget was a big one.
Yeah.
You know, the Labor Standards Board was a big one. So are there any particular things that come to your mind?
Yeah, there's a couple. So the budget would be one. Like obviously, the, the communication between the city council and mayor is not working very well, right? Vetoes over and over again. It seems like there are a lot of things that the city council wants to solve. But it seems like they're not being solved the way that they want to. For example, like, like I said, funding the police would be one that I would say in that current budget thing, you know, current budget approach that the city council agreed on was, hey, let's just get rid of this recruiting budget so that we can't get more policemen. So that would be one. And I, I feel like we're not seeing the, we're not seeing the outcome for our high taxes. I, that's what I hear a lot in the neighborhood. It's like, what am I paying for? What, what services am I paying for? I'm not getting the police when I need it, which happens, right? It's, as long as you're not getting murdered, everything's okay. Or not okay, right? It's, but you have, we're not, we're not getting the, the services that we need to actually feel fulfilled and safe and, and supported. But the, and the prices are going up. It's harder and harder to live in Minneapolis. That's why people will be moving out, not only for residents, but business. Another one would be, I guess it's pretty controversial right now. The George Floyd Square thing that just recently is kind of what's going on in city council discussion right now. Where, you know, do you support the open, flexible option or a pedestrian mall? And I feel like that question is kind of a false dichotomy in some ways. I feel like the problem's way bigger than the street structure that you decide on. So like if you go, like it's more of a problem into how do we redeem the situation? How do we bring back peace? How do we bring back, you know, care for those in need? How do we, how do we support those who feel like they're unsafe? You know, that's a bigger question than.
Well, right now, I mean, I appreciate the nuance and right now, I think 12 businesses have stepped up and are suing the city for like $46 million.
Oh, yeah, I read that. Oh, yeah, I read that.
And uh, you know, I, I'm, I don't know if anything like this has ever happened before, but when they uh, cut, you know, basically cordoned off that four block square area, all those businesses in there have suffered a lot. And their argument is essentially that um, the city took eminent domain over their businesses. And I mean, I'm, that's a hack job of explaining it, but, and so now they're suing the city because, and I feel like they've got a, a point. I don't know if they have a
Yeah.
case that it'll actually win. Um, so when you say like, yes, you definitely want healing, but it's, that healing, I feel like is different for everybody, right? Like the guy who owns the uh, barbecue shop there shouldn't have to like deal with someone getting shot and coming bleeding all over his counters because there's no police there, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, so it's tough though. And
Yeah.
You know, what I'm hoping for is that um, you know, ca- conversation starts to happen where we recognize it's not all cut and dry, you know? It's not just one group's voice that gets to be represented when it comes to uh, George Floyd Square, any of these issues. There's multiple stakeholders, right? And
Yeah, yeah.
So in that, that particular issue, I mean, I, I feel like they took a really long time to collect feedback and ideas and um, and obviously I'm interjecting my commentary.
Oh, that's great.
I, I, I feel like there's a lot of people that would like the city to move forward, right?
Yeah.
And you, you did speak to that a little bit earlier, just by saying like, where's that communication between the city council and the mayor? That you can't move stuff like this forward.
Yeah, yeah. It seems to be um, a very difficult problem to solve. Um, at least with the culture in the city council and the culture in the cit- with the city staff. And that seems to be something that actually needs to be solved. So working together is, I think, so important. Um, rather than just, this country is so polarized already. Let's get something.
So let's, let's talk about that because uh, you know, unlike two years ago, this uh, the city council is also competing with the mayor's race for attention.
Yeah.
And um, there's a lot of, I guess, discussion about like where is, how do we get the right mix of council, mayor, that they can all work together? So my, my question to you is, does Fry deserve a third term? Are you supporting his third term? Or you're neutral? Like where do you stand? Uh, and then if, let's assume for a moment he does win, are there common issues that you think you could work with him on?
Yeah, so um, first of all, I'd just say I would love to work with Fry. So uh, if, if he's there, I'll work with him. But whoever gets there, I will also work with them as well. Um, my hope is that, you know, it's all about compromises. It's not about like going against them. It's like, okay, well, here's my solution. Well, let's talk about, here's another solution. Let's kind of meet in the middle. That's really what my campaign will be all about. I'm more of a moderate in that side. Where I'd be like, hey, you know, both sides kind of have good things worth debating, um, but ultimately we gotta make a decision, right? Um, that means, yeah, working with someone. I, I would love to work with Fry. I think um, he seems like a nice guy. He seems like um, I, I actually uh, like a lot of his policies. So I don't, wouldn't say that I would disagree with um, what he did, uh, what, what he's done or what he would say. In fact, like for the George Floyd Square, I would totally be behind him for the open flexible option, especially since the research has been done. There's no reason to like redo the study, pay more money. But I guess, I guess, in my opinion, um, either approach, we could still work on healing the city. Um, whether it's a pedestrian mall or an open flexible option. Um, they're not necessarily against each other. But I would say, well, let's go with what the community wants, but that's just, just me. But um, yeah, that's, but Fry, yeah, I think I could work with another mayor as well, but
Have you uh, had a chance to meet any of the other candidates or listen to them or anything like that?
Yeah, 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 some of them are friends.
Okay.
Yeah, I've um, enjoyed, um, you know, I've even met Chavez, so, and I find him to be an enjoyable person. Um, who is open to talking with me, which is great. And um, that's one thing that I wish happened more.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because it'd be like, hey, you know, I'm not against you. We're trying to solve this problem in a city. Let's work together rather than against each other.
Yeah, you kind of miss, I mean, uh, the, the old type politics that you hear people talking about sometimes where you could even be uh, a Republican and a Democrat and you, you uh, fight it out on the floor or
Yeah.
Voice your opinions, but that doesn't mean that you can't go out to dinner afterwards. Or go to the same barbecue and, and enjoy each other's company, just because you uh, don't agree on you know, the tax rate.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I wish there was more of that. I, I, I actually have reached out to a lot of the other side. Um, but I really don't get much feedback and I, I want to be, I want to see what they are really concerned about too, because I'm sure there's some things that from the other side, we're missing, right? There, there are, there's a, there's, you can't just have a one side beats all. That's kind of what's happening all over the US right now.
Yeah, I mean, it leads to kind of where we were talking at the very beginning. It leads, it's kind of winner take all. Uh, ugliness, throw the opponent under the bus where, as opposed to just saying, this is, I disagree with you. But you don't necessarily have to, you know, destroy their life and reputation.
Doesn't mean we have to hate each other, in fact, I
So um, one last question, I think, just so that um, people get an idea of who you are as a person. Is there some sort of hobby or fun activity that you do during the summer that um, you could talk about?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I, so um, I um, won't be doing much of that this summer, because I'll be out campaigning, but um, and perhaps future summers. Um, but um, we like to go out to the country sometimes and do some like work on um, gardening and stuff. My wife loves to do that, so she's got um, places to do that. And um, we like to just um, go camping, right? And out into the, out into the, away from technology. I, I'm a computer scientist. I need to get outside. That's my, I love to bike. I love to do anything that actually doesn't involve technology.
Right, yeah. Well, even you see bike, you know, some bikers will have like their bikes all full of technology, right?
Yeah.
You know, I don't know, it's hard to avoid, but I, I can get it. Uh, so can I ask one more question?
Oh, yeah, yeah, go anytime.
So, East Phil- they have the um, the rooftop
Yeah.
project.
Yeah.
And I think that's been uh, going on for a long time where they're trying to build basically this cooperative. Um, maybe you know more about it, but I'm just wondering if you have a position on that particular, it's called East Phillips Neighborhood Institute, I think.
Yeah, um, EPTNE, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, that's correct. Um, so there's a couple of things I love about it. Getting the community together to try to solve problems, um, especially related to like, you know, my wife is so totally interested in gardening.
Well, that's, that's what made me think about it.
Yeah, she would love to be involved in that. Um, and she would love to do that with the community, so would I as well. Um, as far as I can tell, I, I still have to learn more about the situation, but it's been difficult to get that underway, um, for maybe multiple reasons. And um, I haven't had time to actually look into what the complexities are there. Um, there's a couple of things, right? Make sure it's safe, make sure it actually will work and revitalize the community. Um, but I think that community come together for like projects like that is actually amazing. Um, so I wouldn't be against it if it worked.
Right.
And um, and the question is, is, you know, is it safe? Can we, can we do this? Do we have enough money? Do we, can we um, support it? I think the community involvement is totally worth investing in those kind of things.
Are there, are there uh, community gardens?
Yeah, right by my house, there's one. Um, there's other community gardens where it's mostly, it's, it's um,
Well, they just
I think it's actually related to EPTNE, actually, but yeah.
They just passed a uh, uh, an ordinance that now you can grow food on the
Yeah.
Boulevard right away, so we'll see what happens with that.
It's all so complicated, right?
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, uh,
Yeah.
Could you just tell people if you have a website or an email or how they should find out more about?
Yeah, I have a website, uh, Dan Orban, uh, D A N O R B A N dot github dot I O.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm a computer scientist. It's just a nice place to, to work. I But it's too, yeah, so.
Great. Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Dan and I extended the interview to talk about why he's running as an independent.
If you want.
Yeah, so second to last, last question. Um, could you, I had assumed um, that you were going to be vying for the, the DFL nomination with the caucus is coming up, but it sounds like that's not what's happening. You're running as an independent?
Yes, yes, and I ran as independent last time as well. Um, so your, your question is, why am I doing that?
No, well, I guess I would ask, um, uh, uh, what does being an independent mean to you? And then from there, like, you know, why not go for the DFL nomination?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, so being independent means that I can meet the constituents wherever they, they are. Um, there's diversity of constituents. I am for all of them, you know what I mean? It's, it's like, I am, the, the country's so polarized and that's kind of one of the main reasons I don't want to seek a party's endorsement. Um, uh, DFL, um, I find that people
That's it. That, you just stop right there. There's only one party in Minneapolis, right?
Yes, yes, yes. Uh, but like, um, yeah, yeah, yes. So I find that people are, I, I want to be supported by my constituents, not by the agenda of a party or um, whatever money that might be involved there. I want to meet the people's needs who are actually struggling in my ward. Um, the people in my ward, um, they
Well, one of the things you said earlier
Yeah.
Makes, like, that I don't quite get, is that core services, the things we were talking about, like, you know, police and roads and streetlights and garbage and all that stuff. Like, they really shouldn't be partisan. Like, you shouldn't have to be in a party and um, you know, I, I've written a couple of different things about ways we could do it um, differently in terms of like proportional representation. But it also bothers me that you can, that you ha- have to put down a party when you file, right? So you put down DFL, Republican or whatever. I mean, there's a guy who I think runs for mayor under the Captain Black Sparrow.
Oh, yeah, I've heard of that one, yeah.
But you know, so anyway, to me, I, I feel like technically they're nonpartisan races, but they're not because people put a flag under their name.
Yeah, I, I feel like we really, I mean, one of the things that I'm running on is let's work together. I feel like when you, when you have to like go under a party, you're essentially saying, this is what I stand for. And I'm not necessarily, I, I think we should actually be able to make decisions based on what makes sense, rather than just what this person or this party is telling me. I don't feel like you have to actually follow the party line, if that makes sense. And I think a lot of issues are that. I feel like that's part of the problem. When I was campaigning last time, there were so many people, like I said, I made no enemies, because everyone uh, no matter what your political affiliation is, are interested in the same issues. They all feel like they need to, um, they, they all feel like, you know, public safety, uh, economic growth, uh, the things that uh, care for one another. Um, I feel like the, the whole us versus them. We actually almost feel like a two-party system here in Minnesota, the DSA and the DFL. Um, I'm all for working together and doing whatever makes the most sense. In fact, when I think of independent, I think of moderate, uh, moderate Democrat, actually. Most of my supporters are that.
Right.
So, um, people who just want common sense solutions, fund the core services of the city. That's where I stand um, in terms of political affiliation. I also feel like it sets me apart because I'm different, because I'm not actually, I'm, I want to represent my whole um, ward.
Yeah, well, great.
Thanks.
All right, thanks for uh, explaining that.
Yep.
Have a good night.